Okay. First of all, I want to acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called to order, and I just want to do a shout out for Andrea McDonald from the United Way, their United by Song concert. Sue Fraser was there, Lori and I were there. It was an unbelievable concert and a great celebration, so just a big shout out to the United Way for their efforts. Declarations of conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Okay. On the agenda, we have four A, B, C, and D, moved by Counselor McKinnon, second by Counselor Matarde. All those in favor? Okay. Counselor Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. So the first one is presentation of Transit Strategies Plan, Left Turn, Right Turn Limited. Counselor Bernard, is that something you want to address?
No, your worship. I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda until I got the agenda, so here to hear the presentation.
Jessica, did you want to present anything? Did you want to add any comments?
So yes, we, the city has a strategic plan for public transit with Stratford and Cornwall, and that plan is over a decade old and is dated. So we have, as you know, this went through council for approval for budget and higher left turn, right turn. So we have consultants from left turn, right turn, as you know, working on a plan. And part of the rollout of the plan was to meet with different stakeholders, and mayor and council being one of them. So we've invited him today to come to present to council what they're working on and bring that forward to you all, so you're in the loop on what's happening. Thank you. This is Evan Brown from Left Turn, Right Turn.
Okay, Evan, do you want to start, please?
Good evening, members of council. Mr. Mayor, appreciate you for taking the time to hear my presentation. So presenting to you on the public transit plan for the PEI Capital Area, my name is Evan Brown. I am a transit consultant with the consulting company Left Turn, Right Turn. So just on our agenda tonight, I'm going to quickly go over the LTRT team and then give you a quick overview of the project and timelines over the next several months. And then I'll outline some of the engagement activities that we will be undergoing throughout the course of this project, and then talking a little bit about the stakeholder and peer identification that will go into inform this project. So the project team consists of myself. I am the project manager for this project. I am a local Left Turn, Right Turn employee. I live just outside of the PEI's capital area. Matthew Latavo is a colleague of mine who is working on this project. Some of you would have met him at the open houses that we were conducting in the evenings of last week. He is the project director and is just ensuring quality on this project. On the bottom of the screen, there is Christina and Pia. They are a little bit of backend support on this project. And then Dennis Fletcher in the top right corner, he is a transit planning subject matter expert that we have as part of this with over 40 years of experience in the transit industry. And he is notable on this project because he was one of the minds behind the 2005 original feasibility study for transit on Prince Edward Island and in the PEI Capital Area. So in terms of project overview, I'll be quickly going over the project drivers, as well as the scope, objectives, deliverables, and timelines of this project. So in terms of project drivers, the motivations that we've heard for the public transit plan thus far have been a combination of political desire across the three communities, community desire, the substantial growth that the three municipalities have been undergoing and are projected to continue to undergo, the suburban areas are becoming more dense, and just a general response to the housing crisis. In terms of timelines for this project, the project is projected to be substantially complete by March 1st, 2024, which will align with budget cycles. So in terms of the scope and deliverable for this project, the first large item, phase of this project is to conduct a comprehensive review of the capital area, public transit, and this is meant to be informed by stakeholder and public input. And so our approach as a company is to really leverage our understanding of the local environment, stakeholders, and then the knowledge of the public and councils, as well as to develop and assess the general context of the capital area and where strategic growth should happen and be directed. And then, of course, to provide and integrate our own industry knowledge on the subject matter. So the second row there, the scope is to better understand opportunities moving forward, and these opportunities are related to operational efficiency, to increasing the attractiveness and ridership of public transit in the capital area, as well as things such as equity and accessibility, response to climate change, technological innovation, and then an exploration of technology associated with transit, such as the hotspot app. And so to undertake this project, we will be, or we have implemented a three-phase approach, phase one being the research and analysis of the current state, phase two being the development of the future state, and then phase three being pulling that all together into a 10-year public transit plan. And so that's what the third kind of objective is, is to develop that long-term plan that will guide public transit in the capital area, so across Stratford, Charlottetown, and Cornwall over the next 10 years. And in terms of objectives and deliverables, when we review the current state, we will be submitting a current state summary, as well as a summary of consultation findings, which will be an overview of the first round of public engagement, which is coming to a close at the end of October. The second objective is to develop public transit recommendations that are strategically integrative into the fabric of the community. They are meant to consider equity and accessibility, and they will be contextually appropriate and growth conscious to the PEI Capital Area. And so this will come with a second round of public feedback, which is anticipated for December, and the draft plan that will be presented then will consider things like benchmarking peer agencies, new service standards moving forward, a evaluation of the current network, fleet and maintenance requirements, marketing and communication recommendations, an assessment of the customer experience and how to improve it moving forward, and then just the general future state of transit. And so finally, these will be consolidated into that regional transit plan on public transportation that contains short, medium, and long-term recommendations and considerations over the next 10 years. And it will ensure that public transit can proactively respond to community needs and the significant amount of growth that is projected in this region. And so that will culminate in a final report, the final presentations to each of the three councils, and then a debrief with the Capital Area Transit Coordinating Committee. In terms of timelines, the project began in August, and it is set to conclude at the beginning of March, with phase one being the current state review and first round of public engagement. And so that was set for August to the end of October, so we're just coming to a close on that and developing that current state summary report. And the first round of public engagement, which I'll talk about in a little bit, is almost concluded. Phase two is set to take place over November and December, and so this is a delving into the future state of public transit in the region and developing recommendations. And then phase three, which will be January to February, will be finalizing the draft plan that is submitted at the end of phase two. So in terms of engagement, for phase one of three phases of engagement throughout this project, phase one is set to conclude at the end of October and will, is consisting of stakeholder interviews, an online survey, which is currently live, community online presentation, which will be taking place later this week on October 26th, and then community open houses, which concluded on Thursday of last week, one being held in each of the three communities. Phase two will take place in mid-December and will similarly consist of a community online presentation. It will also have three open houses, one in each community, and there will be presentations to committees of council and/or council as appropriate that relay the draft recommendations and findings of the public transit plan. And then finally, phase three of that engagement will be again to engage virtually with the public, as well as bring the final plan document to councils for approval. So in terms of the stakeholder agencies that have been engaged or are intended to be engaged as part of this project, the list on the screen in front of you are the ones that have been reached out to. The ones in bold, which are the municipality councils, T3 owners and drivers, four departments of the province, UPEI, Immigrant and Refugee Services Association, the Charlottetown Airport and Resourceabilities are stakeholders that have responded to our inquiry and that we are working with to get their opinions and public transit in the region. Also, as part of this project, we are looking to peer agencies, and these are peer agencies that we will be used to inform how public transit in the capital area can move forward using lessons learned in other communities. So Charlottetown is halfway down this list, with the peer agencies below it and above it being peer because of their population served, their numbers of routes, their service area. And these agencies are expected to provide us with a general overview of transit best practices that we can use moving forward and will be contextually appropriate to Charlottetown and Cornwall and Stratford, and just provide general best practices. And then in terms of some of the things that we've been hearing so far, just in terms of a general transit reflection, this is by no means comprehensive, but in terms of general strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and obstacles with public transit in the capital region, these are some of the points that we've been hearing. So in terms of strength, we've heard about predictability, service adjusted well, valued for its efficiency and its cost effectiveness, and general well-use. The ridership over the past several years has increased exponentially. For weaknesses, we've heard things like accountability, more transparency is needed, performance metrics being needed, and generally the running times or hours of operation of transit being inconvenient for certain folks, this one specifically featuring shift workers. And then in terms of opportunities, there is a fair amount of potential to integrate with other services, such as the Rural Transit Service, implement and use technology, explore alternative options such as on-demand, and then focus on and capitalize on that significant community growth. And then the last quadrant there is obstacles, and so that is things like equitable service across the three municipalities, a lack of a baseline of operations information, funding opportunities, and then, of course, municipal bottlenecks such as the Hillbrook Bridge and North River Causeway, providing some issues with just routing times. And then for next steps with this project, as phase one engagement comes to a close, we are set to evaluate the engagement results from the survey when it closes on October 29th, the open houses, which have already closed, the stakeholder engagement and interviews, and then that virtual engagement session that's happening on October 26th. And then after that, there will be a summary of the current state findings, and then we'll move into phase two, which is developing the future state and creating recommendations. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, happy to field them.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Twill.
Thank you. Do I ask to the chair or just go directly? Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for the open house. Talked place the other day. I like that concept of citizen engagement. I find it much more personable. I know that when Ramona Doyle was here, that was one of her attributes, and I like that format. People are relaxed, they get an opportunity to talk to yourself and your colleague that you pointed out earlier. Everything, I guess, is tied to the budget in terms of, that's what Jessica always tells me, everything's tied to the budget in terms of enhancements and improvements to our transit system. It's no secret people are looking for extended hours of operation. They're looking for more routes in the suburban communities, and rightly so, with the growth and development of the city, whether it's East Royalty, West Royalty, Winslow. The growth and development compared to five years ago is enormous. So I'm certainly looking forward to recommendations of that magnitude. Also, one of the things that I keep hearing is, you know, Saturdays and Sundays as well. So I know there's more work to be done, but in terms of extending the hours through the week, Saturdays and Sundays, and routes out in the suburban communities, how do you see it thus far? I know you've only completed part of your, part of your analysis when it comes to citizen engagement, phase one, or phase one is where you're at right now, but from your experience, what would you say the early prognosis or early projections are?
In general, the routes that are currently operating in the PEI Capital Area cover a fairly large portion of the neighborhoods and communities within, the notable exceptions being going further into East Royalty, as well as some of the, I guess, border areas of Cornwall and Stratford. As part of this project, we'll be looking at the routing to try to identify any areas that could be a little more efficient. So transit networks operate on service hours, and so we'll be looking to see if those service hours that are currently in use can be a little bit more evenly spread or allocated a little bit more efficiently in order to increase the service. In terms of how it is now with respect to servicing residents, we are just kind of in the middle of our analysis, but where the service is concentrated, say in downtown Charlottetown with routes one, two, and three being the, kind of those ring routes, people on those routes are serviced quite well, and ridership reflects that. And so I think there is an opportunity to explore some of those areas outside of those routes one, two, and three to make more improvements. Does that answer your question?
Counselor Twill.
All due respect, I think that was generic, you know, and I understand, there's a lot of work yet to be done.
Yes.
But what I'm hoping for in this exercise is that, you know, because you hear from residents from all over the city, what I'm looking for is substantial changes to our transit system. And sometimes I have to remind people, our transit system's not that old. It's what, maybe 20 years old? Not sure if that. Was started by our former deputy mayor, Stu McFagin. He was the one that took the bull by the horns. He initiated this, you know, the transit system, and a credit to him. But that's my only fear going through this entire exercise, is that I don't want it appear to be or resemble or reflect the status quo. I'm hoping for substantial changes, and I know that has budget implications, but our community is telling us that, and I'm sure you're hearing it as well. I mean, you're hearing it more than I am, but that's what I'm looking for at the completion of this exercise. And our main entrances, like, you know, the North River Roads, Kensington Road, St. Peter's Road is another one. That's what I'm looking for at the conclusion of the exercise. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you. And it was 2005 when it was initiated, over there in the Charlottetown Fire Station with your old buddy, Elmer McFagin. Counselor Bernard.
I just wanted to add to Counselor Twill. The transit system is growing, and as we know, we just got 425,000 from the provincial government not four months ago. So we did institute longer routes, longer hours, I should say, and added more routes. So it continues to grow, and I think that's why we haven't had a study in at least 10 years. I think the idea is to get this study and see what the recommendations are, and then we'll be looking for funding to implement those recommendations. But we did just do increases in the transit, increases in the hours, and increases on the weekends. Thank you.
Evan, just on your identifying peer agencies, Charlottetown, 49,500. Where'd you get that number?
I don't have that up. That would be from a QDA fact book. So QDA is the Canadian Urban Transit Association, and those numbers are provided by transit agencies across the country. They are self-reported, and so that is an estimate provided by the T32 QDA on population served.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thank you for that, Evan. We're just looking under the reflection, the transit reflection part there, and it was, I think the strengths, opportunities, and obstacles were pretty clear, but it's a word that we get thrown around a lot, accountability, transparency, and all that. What does that mean as a weakness with regards to our transit system? How does, what's the accountability piece missing here with regards to what we have? And how does this operator, assuming T3 transit, have to be more transparent? What does, can you sort of paint a picture for me on that?
Sure.
Exactly what they're meaning?
Just a point of clarification there. T3 transit is the brand of public transit in the area where the operators try to stores. And so accountability and transparency here would be more specifically aimed at the transit operator and their relationship to the municipalities in terms of things like operating and capital costs, expenditures, and funding received. costs, expenditures, and funding received, and revenue ratios, and things like that. The operators, typically in transit systems, transit operators are, have limited ability and oversight of the transit system. In many jurisdictions, when transit operators are contracted, they are contracted to operate the buses and the routing changes and the funding, and everything stays within the purview of the municipalities. And so in terms of routing the transit operator here, often pilots new routes or routing changes before receiving approval from the CATCC, and that can cause a little bit of a conflict with providing reliable service. Because if you get on the bus one day expecting you to go to work in the standard amount of time and then find that the route is changed for whatever reason, or the time you usually take it is changed for whatever reason, that can cause issues.
Follow-up there, Counsel?
I guess I would just be, I would see that as part of the growth, project process when you're, I mean, you have to try and see how things work. I mean, you can't just go full bore into something and then find out it's an unmitigated disaster, and then what do you do? So I just see that as part of it. I guess the other part is, I mean, if we're going to be, I'm all for making sure that we are accountable and we are open and honest with these things. I think that has been the case fairly much so far. So I guess I feel that we've been pretty well informed and up to date in terms of a lot of this stuff. So anyway, I would just hope that that would continue, and we continue to, I would support, I like pilots, I like trying to find out new ways, better ways to do it, so it could be some short-term pains for long-term gain.
Yep.
So I wouldn't want that to be a barrier to not trying something different or seeing if we can find new ways to make better.
Yeah, and just to be clear, too, these are things that we've heard preliminarily. They are a snapshot of everything that we've heard, just for the purposes of presenting to you folks here today.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Evan, for your presentation. Just one observation that I noticed was, just under the motivations for the plan, I didn't see any mention of anything to do with climate action, and seeing there was political desire, community desire, time of growth, even response to the housing crisis. What about regards to climate action lens on this?
Yeah, certainly. Transit is a great tool for climate action, and as we've, as T3 has grown in recent years, there has been a push for increased sustainability and the electrification of vehicles. That is certainly a motivation for the public transit plan and will be explored as part of this plan. It is not listed on here because these are just meant to be generalized bullets, again, based on things that we've heard to date, for some of the larger bucket motivations, and that isn't to say that sustainability and climate action isn't one of those larger bucket things. It's just, again, reflective, a snapshot of what we've heard.
Okay. Evan, just stakeholder list. I know that Counsel McLaren and I wrote to BioVectra. They have about 682 employees, and they were concerned about the transit extended out there. I know that Mark Smelman did show up, and he is passing that survey around to the other employees, and I think there's anticipated growth of another 100 employees out there. Now, that's on the outer reach of, you know, where your most active is on the University Avenue, so I think that would be a challenge. And the other was CNIB. They had, did a survey, and they listed some issues with the transit, so you'll be getting word from them also.
Yeah, and that's fantastic. This list, unfortunately, due to the timelines of this project, these stakeholders were identified for interviews, but other stakeholders on top of these have been reached out to in other capacities.
Yeah, yeah. And just on the list that you showed, or that you had?
Yep.
That weaknesses, strengths, obstacles, equitable service across three municipalities. I think, Jessica, if I'm right or wrong, we're the majority contributor to the capital region transit system, so it may require some more funding from the other municipalities so they can broaden their service into the communities.
Yep.
Counsel Twill.
Just to follow up, with respect to CNIB, in terms of residents with mobility challenges, you know, and it's very difficult for them, what can be done to improve people that have those challenges? And is our current fleet equipped enough to be able to handle, you know, our residents with mobility challenges? And is it done in a very safe manner, predictable manner?
Accessibility on buses can vary. The fleet with Charlottetown, they are accessible buses, so they are buses with ramps, they can kneel, and those are all great amenities, and the fact that all buses here have those is a very positive thing. Where things will be able to be improved for accessibility and things that will be explored as part of this plan relates to infrastructure, so bus stop amenities, curbs, snow clearing efforts, and everything like that to ensure that folks with and without accessibility needs can get to the bus safely and efficiently and without worry.
Just on that, CNIB asked about audible stops because that is an issue for them. They don't know, being visually impaired is difficult to
Yes.
determine or assess where their stop is.
Yes, stop audio.
I know in Ontario, I was told by the Nova bus owners, that in Ontario, it's now law, they have to provide audible, or if it's not Ontario, it's Quebec.
Yeah, it's part of the Ontario Accessibility Act, the AODA.
Well, Evan, thank you very much. Counsel Bernard, that was a great presentation. Jessica, thank you, and it was a good presentation down there at the Charlottetown Library Learning Center. Great idea.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Evan.
Should have asked Counsel Dron, did you have any questions?
No, none at all. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a utility resolution, annual sewer main maintenance RFQ award. Mr. McEwen's here, the manager of the utility, water and wastewater. Mr. McEwen, you may want to tell them what the utility picked up at the Atlantic Wastewater Conference.
Two awards, two biggest awards for Atlantic Canada. So last week, we had the privilege of hosting 460 people from the water and wastewater industry here in Charlottetown. And Charlottetown Sean, by winning the Large Project of the Year in cooperation with Stratford for our work to improve harbor water quality. And in addition, it is my extreme pleasure to let you know that the best tasting tap water in all of Atlantic Canada comes from Charlottetown.
Hey, yeah. Hey, hey. The chairman is very proud, if you're right, Mr. Chair.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. That's good news. Well done.
Thank you, your worship. Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counsel Matart. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the RFQ award of the annual sewer main maintenance, and accepts the bid submitted by Island Coastal Services in the amount of $37,200 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay.
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one.
The deputy is addressing this issue.
To dial out, please dial the area code and number that you wish to connect to the conference, followed by the pound sign. Press star to return to the conference.
Are you still there, Counsel Dron?
I'm still here. Thank you very much.
Okay. All those in favor? Question? Okay. Yeah, okay, Kevin, Counsel Ramsey, and thank you for refereeing that. Thank you. Counsel Bernard?
I'm just curious, the difference in the bidding.
Yeah.
One is astronomically higher than the other. I'm just wondering what the reason would be for that, if we have an answer to that.
Did you want to answer that, Counsel Dron? Do you want to direct it to your manager?
No, we can direct it to the manager. I mean, we've worked with this company a last number of years. They've done it, they know what the work is, so I think, you know, when they put their work in, they know what it's going to take. So I think the other one that was a lot higher never worked with this before, so they were just kind of guessing it. But I'll let the manager jump in there if he wants to, if there's something else he can say.
Mr. McEwen, you're okay with that? Yeah. He's clear with your explanation there, Mr. Chair. Any other questions? Counsel Bernard? Good? Okay, all those. Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, ten zero. Thank you, Mr. McEwen, and well done, Mr. McEwen.
Best water in, where in the world? Is the best water in the world?
Strategic priorities, I think this goes over to, is there a resolution? Nope. Yes, there is. Okay. Do you want to read it? And then, do you want to speak to it there, Counsel Beck? Okay. Go ahead and read it.
Thank you, your worship. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ankauf. Be it resolved that the city council adopt the attached Code of Conduct for Public Appointments effective immediately.
Counsel Beck.
Yeah, so this was a Code of Conduct that we, with our various advisory boards that we have operating within the city, looking to come up with some consistent policies, procedures, and guidelines, I guess, so that everyone has an understanding that we're kind of all working from the same page, regardless of what advisory board you might be on. I do know that there were some concerns in the past, particularly around the social media and communication or city communication protocols as well, too, which we did address. And then the last part was, that kind of needed a bit of refinement, was question around external agencies and how they would have their own policies and their own Code of Conducts, but if we have representation on those external agencies, we wanted to make sure that we were, those who were representing the city were representing the city in accordance with what we, our expectations are. So it was just a way of including it. Sue did a great job of incorporating, Sue Fraser did a great job of incorporating that in the opening paragraph. And so I think the documents has kind of taken into a lot of factor, a lot of submissions of ideas, and I think it's a pretty comprehensive document, and I fully support it.
Counsel Bernard.
And I'll address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, very supportive of the document. A lot of work obviously went into putting this together. My question then is, does this become for the active advisory boards committees to sign those retroactively? Because they're a couple months into their appointments already, so they'll be going back to sign all these, because I believe there's an acknowledgement and a signature required by each member? Yep.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah. You're correct.
So there will be an onboarding session?
There will be, yeah. There will be an onboarding session that will come with it, and everyone will be brought up to speed in terms of what the expectations and the Code of Conduct is. And we talked about maybe doing various groupings dependent, it could be in-person, it could be online, could be that sort of thing, teams training, because we've got various boards and committees, so those parts can be worked out at a later time. But it will be an element of retroactivity to it, I guess, in the sense that it would be for them, yeah.
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Chair. I'm in full support of this because in the past, we had a few advisory committees sort of went to the press and speaking, and speaking on behalf of city council, and basically telling us what to do. So I think it's a great step, and I thank Sue for working on that, and yourself, and CAO, so I'm in full support. Thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Okay. Ten zero. Wish to go with the diversity, equity, inclusion?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that effective immediately, and to replace two outgoing board members, Diane Porter and Ree Metry be appointed to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force as recommended by his worship, Mayor Philip Brown.
Questions called. All those in favor? Nope. Question? Go ahead.
Kind of new to this. So just wondering, I guess I'm wondering how, were these names taken from, I know that we seek submissions of people to come in, and we had two outgoing people, or how do we go about recommending these people? And maybe a little bit of who even they are, or what the relevant skills or attributes that they might have that would make them applicable? And I don't know either one of them, and I'm asking this more out of ignorance than anything really, because I just don't know, not rudeness, but out of ignorance, because I just don't really, I'm not sure who they are or how we go about. So maybe if you could just enlighten us a little bit about who these individuals are, how they're applicable, what relevant skills that might make them, and I'm not questioning that, I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, it's good. We did do a call-out, as you said.
I would say that for the next one, too, because the person on the disabilities. So I guess if we could maybe answer, I have the same question about the next one, just in terms of understanding.
So for both nominations, this is a confirmation, the list that was put together by HR, Human Resources, that's Emily and Autumn Evans, they categorized and put them in the groups by what they checked off, and then I went through them. Now, the first time we did this, back in 2019, we had over 427 names. This time around, a little over 100. So I was trying to pick from the different groups, but they were already involved in other committees, whether they were boards, agencies, boards, or advisory committees. And if you look at Diane Porter, Diane Porter is, her background, she's a master's degree or her or a PEI Advisory Committee, Public Administration Diploma, and she has an interest in diversity, inclusion, and equity. As for Rem, she is a Syrian, New Canadian living here in Charlatan, and she's been trying to get involved with the city for the last number of years, so I reached out to her and she said, I'd love to sit there. Now, there is another appointment we have to put on this, and I did speak to the chair of this advisory task force. Her name is Rose Ellen Gis, and Rose Ellen was suggesting that she would like to have someone from the Asian community, that is, from China specifically. So we didn't get any applicants that are of that background, so we may have to just reach out into the community. And as for Sherry Galant, Sherry Galant is a disabled person who worked with Veterans Affairs and is now retired, and again, she was, the list were sparse this time, so I think they're all very good choices. But again, I'm glad that you do ask, because it's good to get some information on the applicants.
Yeah. No, it sounds good. Thanks.
Counsel Ramsey?
On that, yes, thank you for that, your worship. When you say you're going to reach out to other groups, do they have to be citizens of Canada, or PEI, or how does that work? Or can anybody just apply?
They do have to be a resident of Charlatan.
Okay.
For sure. But they can be a permanent resident or a citizen.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just to further to Counselor Beck, I think maybe in the future, could we add a little, we have a back sheet on most of these, could we do that, just to break down? I, too, was, you know, looking at this and saying, you know, I trust the leadership and what you're picking for these, but it would be nice to have some context around the applicants and who you're selecting and why, I guess would be. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Duly noted. And CAO Eleanor, can we just take note of that? And that can be provided by HR. So that's a good point. Anyways, I think the citizens, residents that stepped up, most of the agencies, boards, and advisory committees are now full, so our list is down to a small number. We may have to do another call-out, just to have a backup list to fill any of those positions if they become vacant, and to get more information on their background. But again, I think Diane Porter, she's the widow of Dr. Reg Porter.
Peter Porter.
Peter, thank you. I was not wrong, Porter. Dr. Peter. Question called? Questions called. All those in favor for number one? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Okay. Next one?
Move by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counsel McCabe. Be it resolved that effective immediately and to replace one outgoing board member, Sherry Galant, be appointed to the Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities as recommended by His Worship Mayor Philip Brown.
And just a quick note on this, Ryan Bulger, who was on the board on this advisory committee, had to leave because he was gainfully employed by the City of Charlatan, down in planning. So kudos. Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Okay. Okay. Most adjourned.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm very fortunate, my granddaughter made Holland College Soccer Team this year as a first-year member, and they played their final game Saturday. They went undefeated all year, first time in Holland College's history for women's soccer. So I'd like to throw a little shout-out. They're in the Atlantic this weekend and following weekend. I believe they're hosting the Nationals. So thank you very much.
Moved? All in favor? Thank you very much.